You should be able to get in.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, August twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to order on Wednesday, March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty three. Governor Healy signed into law chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty three, an act making appropriation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty three, which included a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Mass Open Meeting Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. Welcome, I'm going to ask you to stand and join me so in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call to order this meeting, I'm going to call the role of Commissioner Stady.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have no executive session today?
No, sir.
Oh, good. We're going to go right to number four. Appointments we have with us, Michelle Sweeney, are from the Canine Companion Group, and I'm going to ask Michelle, before we sign a proclamation, to come on up and talk to us. And we're going to welcome you, Michelle, and then with the end of this, we're going to sign a proclamation claiming, is it the September, September twenty fourth, National Service Dog Month? The floor is yours.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you. Ready? Sit.
My goodness.
Thank you so much for having me, my name is Michelle Sweeney. I am the supervisor of the Physical Therapy Department at the Pappas Rehab Hospital for Children in Canton.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, as many of you might know, Pappas is one of the four public health hospitals, and it is the only public health hospital that handles pediatric patients for the state of Massachusetts. Domino is our facility dog. We work together in the hospital, he is the most popular employee there. I am now resigned to chopped liver status, I get hello Domino, oh yes, hello Michelle. But we, Domino, as I was saying earlier, was provided to me and the hospital by the organization Canine Companions. They are a nationwide organization, they are the largest organization that provides service animals at no charge to people with disabilities and to people who work in different areas such as healthcare, criminal justice, and education. Domino is a facility dog, which means that he is primarily used for patient support and care in the Physical Therapy Department, he helps me, we go for walks, we take bike rides with the kids next to them. Oops. And, and he helps with medical appointments. So he will go and sit with the patients when they have medical appointments to ease fear. He also has a number of specialized vests that he wears. One has zippers and ties and Velcro so that the children can work on their spine motor skills. And he also has a communication vest, which has all different symbols so the patients can pick out what they want to tell people or make sentences by putting them things onto his vest, and then it demonstrates what they're trying to communicate, so. Yes, so he has been an absolutely wonderful addition to the hospital, and we are so thankful that Norfolk County Commissioners will be giving us the proclamation to declare September as National Service Dog Month.
Aye.
I have given you guys some information on our different programs, and it's, like I said, it just is some minor little facts about it. Our newest big program is, so this is, we have active graduate teams, actually, we just, this is actually updated, we just matched our eight thousandth dog since the program started in nineteen seventy five, and that was at our last team training, so that was exciting. But we currently have over twenty seven hundred teams working together throughout the United States. And as I mentioned earlier, the Canine Companions breeds their own dogs, they're all Labs and Golden Retrievers and crosses. Domino is a Black Lab Golden Retriever cross, so. But it is a very wonderful program, and as I said, they provide all of their dogs free of charge. They do fundraising so that the recipients don't have to pay anything to get their dogs.
Wow.
Yeah. So.
First, my memory, oh, Michelle, is this facility, we used to refer to as Canton Hospital School.
That's right.
Correct.
Called the, well, it's called Massachusetts Hospital for Handicapped Children. Right near me, I grew up two streets away.
Oh, really?
I knew it very well.
I probably walked in on your street.
That street, I use that street to go.
That's Randolph Street. It goes right up to Randolph, keep going. Yeah, I know the area very well, and also then they had the Margaret Brayton High School.
Yes.
And then that Dr. Brayton, who was a longtime trustee.
Yes.
So, I don't know if I have any questions, but great programs, wonderful to see you and meet you and see what you're doing. But are there other programs that have dogs?
So there are other programs that are, there's some local programs too, like the Gophi Program, which is based out of Walpole, which is the golden opportunities for independence, they raise golden retrievers. They're a much smaller program, and then there's the Needs Program also, which is in the area, and they also raise dogs for independence. Canine Companions is the largest, and it is nationwide as opposed to a local.
Seems that, my own personal observation, of seeing more of people with the dogs, you see it more often, maybe because I'm aware of it.
Right.
You see them in different places now, in hotels and schools.
Absolutely.
And even the little signs say, no dogs allowed, except, you know. But I done, my first connection with it was a girlfriend of our family who had a child that needed some help, and I thought she had to go to Oklahoma or something like that, is that possible?
It is possible.
She flew off to Oklahoma.
It is.
But she did a fundraising effort, helped her out, and she got a dog, and what a difference to me with that girl.
It really is.
Her daughter, what a difference.
So our class was twelve graduates when I graduated in November, and we had four that were children who received companion dogs, and their parents actually acted as their facilitators. And then we had three that were personal companion dogs, and then the rest were facility dogs. So it was, it was, it was, it was a nice mix of all of the different, but to watch the difference in the children who received the dogs and the people with disabilities who also received their dogs, the things that they were able to do just right off the bat were just really change, life-changing for them.
Says they have Veterans Initiative, but good, Mrs. Chairman, do you link in with the Veteran Department, it's like, do you know the Canton Veteran Agency?
So they do, so that they, so the Veterans Program is actually our biggest program right now, taking new members into it. It's, it's a new program because we've just recently worked more on the training for the PTSD and the Nightmare Interruption, which is really what the focus is. So it's pretty incredible, the work, the dogs can make space in crowded areas if they realize that their person is having an issue with PTSD. They also are trained to wake their person up if they're having a nightmare in the middle of the night or on the couch or whatnot, so it'll interrupt those nightmares and help get them to recovery. And they also give them, they'll like wake them up and then they'll lay on top of them to give them pressure to make them feel safe.
Right, right.
Yeah. Also, just last week, Netflix released a new documentary, it's called Inside the Mind of a Dog, and about half of the movie is about Canine Companions, and actually, one of his trainers is featured in the movie as the person who's.
I'm going to watch it, I saw that advertised, I'm a big Netflix guy.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I was like, what's that about, I'll go back to that later.
It's, it was, it was really well done, it was interesting, so, but yes, it was, it was great to see, it was, it was a nice, it actually takes place at the training facility where we were trained for the most part.
Well, keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate what you're doing.
We really appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Collins, any questions, any comments?
No, it's great.
You know, you're talking before the meeting.
He did.
I thought it was a personal friend of yours, I never seen Peter so animated.
Oh, yes.
Okay, well, we're going to dedicate September as National Service Dog Month, we actually have, you must have supplied us with this proclamation, I hope. But now we'll put it, we'll do it, and we'll, we'll bring it forward every year, so we'll change the date and make it part of our August, late August meeting every year.
That's wonderful. And if anybody's interested in finding out more, they can go to canine.org is the website, or they can email info@canine.org.
Okay, and you're going to leave these?
Yes, I can leave these with you.
Okay. Okay, do, I don't know that it's necessary to read the whole thing, but.
Oh, but I read it, it just.
Sure, whatever way you want to do it, the last paragraph.
There's a lot of whereas, there's a lot of whereases here.
That's correct.
How about this, or modify this, we are going to, I move as a motion, and if you wanted to do this.
Yes.
Norfolk County Commissioners declare the month of September is two thousand and twenty four National Service Dog Month in the county of Norfolk. So we're, that's going to be a motion, and there is an incredible amount of whereas, noting the fact that it's a great organization, that you serve a lot of people, you're a nonprofit organization, and the goal of this is to educate our community of the benefits, and then to continue to work to be inclusive, and in recognition, I'll summarize, in recognition of the service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community, the Norfolk County Commissioners hereby claim September to be National Service Dog Month. We encourage all our citizens to celebrate service dogs and be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance, and it's offered this day in Norfolk, and it's going to be signed by our Chair, Joseph Shea of Quincy, Peter Collins of Milton, and proudly Richard Stadia of Canton. Our motion.
Second.
Motion made in second to declare September as National Service Dog Month, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll mail all this out. Bill, Bill Buckland is our outreach.
This is political, God, I'm not supposed to do that, they don't have my other guys on it, I'm only giving this to have my contact.
Excellent.
I'd love to come up and take a little tour.
I would love that.
If you want, we're not too far away.
I would love that.
Invite the whole board. Do I give it a proclamation, or we're keeping it?
We'll take it, I'll scan it.
Yes, I would love it, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, Michelle.
All the best.
Nice to meet your family.
Keep up the great work, Michelle.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. See you.
Wonderful.
Matthew and Al, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, nice looking dog.
Your mom did a great job.
Thank you so much.
Hope to see you soon. All right.
No, I'll get it ready.
Be well. That's wonderful.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Beautiful, got to get over it.
Number five.
All right.
Public comment, each week we have a session at our meetings calling for public comment, both in person and on the Zoom, so if anyone has any public comment, now is the time to come forward. Last call for public comment. We're going to move on to item number six. Not sure what it is, but.
Old business.
Old business, I have none. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration, we have one at the agricultural school.
Right, I'd be pleased to move if you want, Mr. Chairman, I'll move at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, move the notice of resignation for Joseph P. Donahue of Ammon as a cafeteria worker at the Ray Stadium, and this resignation is effective retro eight five twenty four, so moved.
Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number eight, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Let's see, we have an extensive list, I'll do the best I can, move it along, this is a, we approve of the warrant list of eight twenty one twenty four. First payroll of the county, twenty five dash seven, the amount a hundred fifty three thousand, eight ninety nine, and eighty one cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Next item, payroll for the school, twenty five dash seven, parentheses four, I move the amount of a hundred thirty nine thousand, nine hundred ninety two dollars, ninety four cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Next, another payroll for the school, excuse me, payroll for the school, twenty five dash seven, parentheses four point one. In this amount, I move is two hundred thirty seven thousand, six hundred six dollars, ninety two cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last item for the county, not all of them, but for the county expenses on county of eight three twenty five, we approve of five hundred forty nine thousand, four seventy five, seventeen cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next item, move approval of a warrant, item twenty five dash one, the US Bank, a Norfolk County renovation, move approval of a hundred fifty five thousand, seven hundred seventy five dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor? Aye. It is a vote, next.
Okay, now, the rest are a series of our operas, but they're different towns, I'm going to try to, I'll group a couple if I can. I move approval of the opera approval for Waymouth, they're both twenty five dash eight. The first one is for a hundred thousand dollars, the second one for Waymouth is ninety three thousand, six hundred sixty one dollars, fifty six cents. I'm sure John will explain them when the time comes, so move approval of both of those.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye. We approve for the opera loan, for the opera award for Denim, the amount a hundred twenty five thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye. These are all twenty five dash eight, I move approval of opera for Norwood, five hundred sixty five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor? Aye, opera for Norwood.
Anybody want to call things? There's no one to call things, okay. Next, I move approval of the opera for Milton for the sum three hundred and ninety six thousand, eight hundred ninety eight dollars, ninety one cents.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Big one, move approval of a opera award for Norfolk, and the sum is one million, four hundred fifty one thousand, six hundred forty four dollars, fourteen cents. It's a big one, so moved.
Motion made in second, is all in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
I should have put this for the other Milton, my apologies, there's another one for Milton, this one is for the amount of two hundred twenty five thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye. And last, the last, may move approval, again, on twenty five dash eight, for the opera award to Wellesley in the sum of six hundred eighty three thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
That concludes that.
That includes opera, and that includes our payroll and expense.
Yes, sir.
Number ten, we'll just do a little review of this, I mean, number nine, Report on American Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, before I go through each of the details of each of the ones the Commissioners stated you just read, I wanted to alert the Commissioners, the status of the program. As the Commissioners may know, a closeout process begins past spring, culminating in the submission of closeout plans from the various communities. That is their plan to receive and allocate or obligate their funds for the end of December. Over the last several months, we have worked directly with each community, as of today, I'm pleased to tell you, twenty two of the twenty eight communities have approved closeout plans. Latest was Waymouth, I just did Waymouth's last night, and I'll get that out to them today. These closeout plans are critical as they legally extend the grant terms to the each community based on their express plans for these, these funds. This afternoon, you approved over three point five million dollars in opera funds, you are getting very close to the end. You have one in a hundred and twenty eight million, up to roughly a hundred and thirty three million, a hundred and thirty three, a hundred and thirty four million, available to the communities. I wanted to briefly let you know where things stand, again, from a macro perspective, most of the funding associated with the balance of available funds comes from the town of Brookline, who, as you probably know, is one of our larger recipients at over eleven million dollars. They have just over four million dollars left to go. Last week, you had Brookline in here, they were very appreciative of your latest grant. The town administrator, Ches Carey, informed you that Brookline had conducted a meeting that day to prioritize the various applications that were in the portal. We received that list on Monday, I believe, so that will open up the gates for our auditors to begin looking at a host of applications that are in the portal that totaled approximately four million dollars. So once we start getting going on those prioritized grants, I expect them to go relatively quickly, so I think Brookline will close out in the next four weeks or so, we'll see how the progress goes in qualifying applications. Following Brookline, Cohasset has just over a million dollars to go, I know they're working on a closeout. Foxborough has seven hundred thousand dollars left to go.
That much, really?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, I stand corrected, that's not Foxborough. My eyes deceive me. It was Denham.
Denham, okay, I could believe that.
We have one point two million left for Milton, that number's deceptive because you just approved just over half a million dollars. We do have a plan for Milton to close out, and I expect to see that grant very soon. And then, you know, by and large, we see a host of smaller grant obligation amounts in areas like Plainville and Wellesley, as well as Waymouth has a small amount left as well, those are small pieces. So I wanted to alert you, you can see the end in terms of the dollars out the door. We will continue, obviously, to use the closeout plan details to monitor how effectively each community is exercising their plan. We're very cognizant that some communities may run up against some deadlines that will not work favorably with their plan. We've encouraged every community to submit what we call above allotment applications, we have eight, I think it's, might be six to eight applications currently in the portal from various communities, including Quincy, actually, that will reside there until and if additional funds become available. So we're positioned to liquidate effectively and then move into the monitoring phase for the last two years. But overall, I just wanted to let you know favorably, things are trending pretty much as they would planned. There's a lot of work going on right now to show the communities, get their monies as soon as possible against realistic plans, and that's part of the closeout process. Moments ago, Commissioner Stadia read you the grant amounts for the various communities, I wanted to give you and listeners to this meeting a brief understanding of what those funds captured. The first is the town of Wellesley, six hundred and eighty three thousand dollar infrastructure grant for the establishment of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This fund will be used to purchase drainage equipment, sweepers, and so forth, associated with their new fund for infrastructure. Wells, excuse me, the second one was for the town of Norfolk. This was also an infrastructure-related project, it is to repair the covert located at number forty Secong Street as it flows from main man pond to wetlands to the west of Secong Street. That was one point four five one billion dollars. The next one was for the town of Norwood, an infrastructure project as well for the Hennessy Field Detention Basin Design. This grant award, that's Commissioner Stady read, was five hundred sixty five thousand dollars. The work is expected to begin, let's see, this fall, so they'll be working on the first phase of the Murphy Field Box covert, and then move to the Hennessy Field Design for the Detention Basin. The town of Denham received a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for planning department improvements. This was a revenue replacement item, and it is to redesign the space for more effective, healthy interaction with coworkers. The town of Milton received two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in infrastructure for sewer reaffilitation. That's a hundred and one thousand two hundred forty five vertical feet of cementitious lining of manholes, exterior grouting, interior patching of seventeen manholes. You, Waymouth Food Pantry is receiving ninety three thousand, six hundred sixty one dollars under the Economic Impact category. They described in detail how they will be distributing these funds through their pantry for backpack, a school backpack program, food pantry, holiday meals, farm-to-family and food rescue programs. The town of Waymouth also received a hundred thousand dollar grant under the Economic Impact category for the operational assistance for the North Waymouth Civic Association, funding for school supplies to the Wesegesit Primary School.
Weseges.
Thank you, as well as the Waymouth Food Pantry, Waymouth Elderly Services, Kelvrick and Baseball, Waymouth Youth Soccer and Friends of Waymouth Library Programs.
Is that a nonprofit?
The Civic Association.
We going down, there were dangerous path there with that?
Uh, well, no, because the award is going to the town.
It goes to Waymouth.
And then Waymouth.
The Treasury's getting okay, give them the Civic Association?
Yes.
Now?
Yep.
Really?
It meets with the Opera Protocol. That's correct.
It does? Civic Association, so any Civic Association in the county could apply for money?
If it goes to their community.
To the town?
Yes.
Wow, I didn't know that. I did not know that.
Final one was town Milton, three hundred ninety six thousand, eight hundred ninety eight dollars under Public Health. This is Student Social Emotional Behavioral Health Project. Milton Public Schools hired an additional Adjustment Councilor and Board Certified Behavioral Analyst. That completes the description of each of the grants. Over the next few weeks, I don't see a lot of activity in the portal, there are approximately four grants at level one. It'll take some time for them to evolve into something that you can consider, I suspect we can see those sometime after Labor Day. Furthermore, I'll be spending extra time over the next week or so, putting in a variety of county-based programs, including the request from probate for a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollar requests from the Norfolk County Sheriff. We have a grant proposal associated with our facilities for replacing burners and other eligible expenses for improving HVAC in Brookline, Rhythm, and Stoughton District Courts. And also, we have assembled a list of equipment needed for the Aggie, the golf course, and facility maintenance. This is equipment needs, groundskeeping, trades workers' equipment and so forth. So those particular projects, all four of those will be hopefully put into our portal in the next week for evolving this fall as we begin the closure of the county's portion of this funding. So long-winded answer to the question, it's up with the opera, but there's a lot going on, I thought you all should see the mentions, thank you.
Any other questions, opera-related, Commissioner?
Yeah, great job, John, thank you, for you, the total today, what did you say, it's about two point eight million?
Three point six.
Three point six? Okay, yeah, that's wrong. So you, the number you're coming, you read off the towns that have money left over, you're right, we're pretty close to, almost like right there, right there, when it's all done.
Yeah, most of it's Brookline.
Yeah. But no, you got to number two, pretty close, that's it, and then you've left a lot, a few for the county projects, and whatever else is left.
Right, so the county's tranche is always separate from what the county communities are getting. So we all, we set aside three percent at the beginning of this program, and that's what we're sticking to. And that three percent covers your projects and your administration fee. This funding, the hundred, and that was approximately four million out of the thirty seven.
Okay.
So the target, and we'll talk more about it as the grant, the grants, applications begin to close, you've got about another five million to go, give or take.
Right, could be a one twenty eight plus five, one thirty three, that's it.
Right.
Okay. All right. Oh, it's fun. Getting it in, amazing.
These are all round numbers, and I'm estimating based on the compilation of what we've awarded to date, there is some wash because some funds associated with these grant communities have been returned, I think you realize some of them, including Milton, have been awarded funds, they return them and they're re-awarding them, so there's some, some effect of that going into the math, but overall, we're under ten million to go.
What happens, John, say, where the program ends up, twenty four ends, program's supposed to end, right? Now, a town completes the project in twenty five, and they have extra money left over, does that come back to us? Or is that going to the federal government?
Federal government.
Okay. So for us to have any kind of redistribution of any surplus, it'd have to be returned now.
Correct, before the, before the end of December.
Before the end of December.
Sooner or later, yeah.
Okay, got it, okay, okay, that makes sense.
There will be inevitably some of that leakage, if you will, there are some large projects that are holding contingencies, Commissioner, and those contingencies are what they are, and if you don't need them, they do revert, so we'll be working on more closely with the communities over the essence of those projects, those dollars, as they begin to lock down.
Now, I read the opera application before I came in, one of them looked like, just that was in advance too, right? They hadn't had a bid on it, they said a bid hadn't come in, so they wanted to get the money, put it in reserve.
That's correct.
But I expect the bid will be completed before the end of the year.
That's right. That's the contingency of getting the closeout approval.
Just right. All right, all right. Good job.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. The in-house money, I shouldn't, I don't know, lack of a better term, you mentioned Sheriff's Department, the probate, the school, I think the DA too also, did, have we received their list, so to speak?
Yes.
We have.
Yeah, we had a conversation, well, you've had two bites of the apple with the sheriff, who I believe paid us a visit in the winter, maybe, and then.
Yeah, he wanted a million dollars.
Yeah, the Commissioners have made it clear, there's a certain scope Yeah, the Commissioners have made it clear, there's a certain scope that they would be interested in, and we've communicated that to both elected, so they responded with written proposals, which are now into the one-hundred thousand dollars range each, so that's the plan.
Okay. Last call for opera-related, especially anything else this week?
Good job.
Okay, time flies by, when this started, I, you know.
Amazing.
Okay. Number eleven is a bid opening at one PM, we have no bid opening today, correct? And on this, we don't have any, number twelve, contract for today? We're redoing the award for the golf carts, because this was dated incorrectly, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that'll be coming down the line. In your packet, Commissioners, is a request from the Denham Square Circle for use of the registry parking lot to hold the trunk or treat on October twenty-sixth, with a rand date of October twenty-seventh, I know we've accommodated them before. I see no reason why we can't do it again. Get a letter here from Ann Miranda, who's the executive director of the Denham Square Circle, which is, I'll go ahead and say, like a chamber of commerce type, association. It brings forty-five-hundred young children and their families to safely trick-or-treat from cars decorated by local businesses and nonprofits. Again, this is the twelfth annual, and it's on October, Saturday, October twenty-sixth, and a rand date on Sunday, October twenty-seventh, three to five PM. Any questions, all?
Move we approve the request of Denham Square Circle?
Send it to the registrar of deeds, double-check.
You've got it exactly, with that permission.
Okay.
For those deeds requested, and subjects that are registry deeds, make sure there's no problem.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made in second to provide parking for the Denham Square Circle, twelfth annual trunk and treat event, October twenty-sixth. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, fellows. Okay. Report of the county directors, next.
Few items. Every two weeks, our team of stakeholders associated with the Denham Superior Court and the Denham District Court Projects meet with Habib Associates to discuss the progress they're making as they prepare each project for bid. Denham District Court, which will host the building management system, to believe, for this past week, received the drawings for how this building management system will work within the Denham District Court property. I met with Mr. McGowan on Monday, and asked for him and our plumbing and electrical staff to review the drawings and get feedback to Habib without delay. Technical drawings, so they'll need some feedback relative to the proposal of the vendor, but in both cases, the projects are moving along as scheduled. They are both tight with timelines, the building management system is funded by ARPA, while the Denham Superior Court project will be funded with capital funds. Both are expected to be put out to bid this fall and awarded this fall, before the end of the calendar year. As I mentioned earlier, Brookline did respond with their prioritization list, which was a breakthrough. We're grateful for their assistance in providing that information. A reminder to the Commissioners, you have an advisory board being scheduled for September eighteenth of the Agricultural High School, consequently, on September eleventh, there'll be material before you for consideration of the advisory board supplemental request week prior. I wanted to also inform you, the engineering department has forwarded the notice of completion of a project that you had approved on May fifteenth. This is the Robinwood Road in Norwood. As always, fine work, very professional work by Patrick, Mike Jardine, and the project team to complete this work that was requested back in May. And I just to note, the school labor attorney and the superintendent and I, I believe, have come to near completion, a proposal with the schools' union to come to terms on the agreement for the employee handbook. Waiting for the union to respond to the final piece, it's relatively minor, but through efforts involving Josh Coleman and John Martin, we were nearly done with that side of the employee handbook adoption. So I have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions of Director Brown, Commissioner Stadia?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The first one, in terms of the upcoming negotiations that, you know, that's something we'll be thinking about, is there some way we can maybe schedule an executive session? We should schedule something like that, maybe in late September, early October, or something like that, just to talk about, coaches' strategy?
Absolutely. I think that's wise. You should be advised, we would, we were planning to, no dates specifically, generally, begin a conversation with the PAC, which is obviously union involvement, this fall, and that would leap probably in November into December in preliminary ground rules of conversation, so. Yeah, it's definitely a fall option, I think, having a conversation with the council about strategies pursuant to what the Commissioners' wishes are.
All right, sounds good. The other thing was, had to do with the electric charging stations, I'd just make a quick comment about that.
Sure.
We have a grant in, and that was for the registry of deeds, right?
That's what the Commissioners approved.
Right. Is there any way we can look at submitting another application for some other court buildings?
We could.
Or the Yankee School or something?
Sure, sure, so, what, if you recall, the program had a couple of, not wrinkles, but issues. The primary driver is what electric company services the area of intent. We selected the Denham spot because Eversource, who provides electricity for this complex, is far more favorable to work within this program than N-Star. So, we do have a few properties that are on the non-Eversource side, and our vendor encourages us to first do the Denham complex project as a proof of concept, show how it will work with Eversource, how effective they are in the program, and then move purposefully, if you will, as you mentioned, to the other properties within the complex, excuse me, within the county.
Okay.
But to be clear, the county Commissioners only approved one at that time.
Okay.
And it was because, I think, we wanted to see, how does the program work? And then one more thing, which we haven't yet heard from the vendor on Commissioner Stadia, is if there are any funds that would be required of us associated with the plan. So when we first engaged them, we were told minimal to no cost associated with this project. A lot depends on what Eversource says about the location and the type of electric charging station solutions that you choose. We, taking the guidance of Mr. Loughlin, who you saw in the email string, selected the more optimal solutions that all other organizations are selecting, and we're waiting to hear from Eversource on what that profile looks like in terms of cost, timing, and overall acceptance into the program.
Okay.
The state funds the program through a grant program, and we, we don't interface with the state, we'll do it through the utility company and our agent.
Makes sense. All right, last one.
Sure.
Got a call from our friend, Selectman McWhiskey, well, we all know, Stoughton, and he asked if there was some way we could either look into or expedite something that still needs to be done on our end. I thought we were all set, but he said a vote has to be taken, or something needs to be signed off, but we had a layout.
Page three?
Yes, yes.
So, there's, there's a lot of email traffic right now between our engineering department and Stoughton.
Yep.
It's progressive.
Okay.
And it shows sort of, okay, now the ball's in your court, okay, now the ball's in your court, from what I can tell. Mark Tisdale, who I think you all met when he came in with the Commissioners, is exceptional in what he does.
Yep.
And he's dealing with somebody who I think is more competent, and that's Patrick Higgins.
Okay.
So, I don't think there's any vote before us right now.
Okay.
Patrick and I talk regularly, in fact, we talk before this meeting. I did see an email that came in recently, but I, I believe most of the work is still being conducted, Commissioner, at the town level.
Okay.
I'll double-check with Patrick to make sure the Commissioner and the select board member are not in conflict, but it's progressive dialogue, it's just a lot of work that is being done by the town, the town's engineer, the town's council, and then it comes to us, and then we require Scott to look at it, and so, so forth, so. I'll check with Patrick to see what things stand, but I haven't heard of any sticking points.
All right, thanks for mentioning it.
Thank you.
Joe's a member of our advisory board, we got a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks before you know it, so I want to make sure it's in the pipeline, so that's fine, that's